Yes. I'd like to call the order of the committee, the whole, for September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at five oh one P M. Tenants roll call.
Aldermen's Madden. Kabaki.
Here.
Engelhardt.
Here.
Kapusta. Terrence.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice.
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. That passes. Approval of the minutes from July thirteenth and August tenth.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Those are approved unanimously. New business: continuation of the two thousand and twenty-two capital budgets fund projects, starting with information technology, which you will find in your book on pages seven through ten.
Is it on? Nope, wrong one.
Maybe not.
We'll raise it up.
I just can't find my... No, but I had it in from last time. It just got taken out.
Mine was in here. It's now already in here.
All right. Want to go through your stuff?
Sure. My memo was in the supplement I think you guys got. I'm just kind of going to review that, if that's okay? This year, I'm only asking for a few things. We're going to continue the city network build-out of cameras. We've got this year, or two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-
Do we have copies of the supplement here, or no?
It's on your iPad.
Let me catch up to you.
Sure.
That's the five-year capital? Or supplements? The first supplement, I T. Okay, gotcha.
He's not I T savvy.
Just want to catch up. I thought we were going to start on the print, so I wasn't looking, so.
No, that's all right. So this, two thousand and twenty-two, is going to be a continuation of the cameras, as we've been putting in the parks, and I think they've been a valuable asset to help with vandalism and other issues. So seventy-one-nine is what we're asking for, for two thousand and twenty-two. This is for Sand Hill Park, Manchester Park, and additional cameras at Idle Isle and... additional cameras at Idle Isle.
Questions, comments?
So the cameras in the current parks have basically helped with enforcement of vandalism, and what else have they done? Is that the main?
That's pretty much the main. Obviously, they're live feed to the dispatch center, so if something's going wrong, the P D usually has, you know, a pretty good eye on it. But if there's vandalism that happens, like at the skate park quite often, what was the last one we just had? Last park we just had vandalism was in Manchester? Some of those, it helps that they can go back and review the footage and just see who's there. They might be able to get a plate, or a truck, or a car, and get some reimbursement for the city for the vandalism that had occurred. Unless the kids are on bikes, and then you've got the bikes, and you've got the kids, I mean...
It does pick up quite a bit. I mean, there's been, I can think of at least four or five instances in the last year, just between Park Arthur, Idle Isle, and Escape Park, where we've gone back to the cameras and got some pretty good-
To me, those would be the three biggest parks, but like Manchester Hill.
Mm-hmm. We'd...
Well, we just put that new playset in there, so it's going to get a lot more use than it had been-
Right, but those are, you know, young kids that are using them, so I don't-
If it's just young kids, you don't have problems, but teenagers tend to go everywhere.
Especially in the evening hours.
Evening hours, yeah. And, I mean, Chief can talk. I mean, Chief can talk about the value of them, if you find a value to us having these cameras all over, but I just see how staff does pull up. When we have problems in parks, they'll pull up the footage the next day, and it gives us a really good idea of what happened.
And these are live, also at the police department, right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're ever bored during the day, come and watch the one by the boat launch in the summer with all the new boat owners. It's-
There were cases specifically at Park Arthur, Idle Isle, by just holding descriptions to our school resource officers that get sent out, and so-and-so, and so-and-so, and so-and-so.
Like I said before, I think those are the three biggest parks, the skate park, Idle Isle, and Park Arthur, and I guess is there a problem at the other parks, Sand Hill and Manchester?
They're both relative... well, Sand Hill is a relatively new park.
Yeah, Manchester has new equipment.
Manchester is going to be a reinvigorated park because of that playset, so, I mean, you could wait until there's a problem, and then put them in, or just be proactive on it. It's not a big ticket number as far as it goes with capital expenses, so. Your thoughts?
Well, I got a question on this. It looks like we're going to go down the line, of course, this is a gift that keeps on giving, we're going to get more and more parks involved with this, and that was kind of planned in the beginning. But we're going to add three more cameras to Idle Isle, and we're looking to add three more, two more parks on, right?
For next year, correct.
Two more parks on. Why wouldn't we pick a third park and put cameras in there and start putting them in all the parks? This is going to be a goal, and then come back around and finish off all the parks, so that we have some coverage in different areas, rather than making sure we have full coverage in one and no coverage in another one?
It's probably due, honestly, to cost, because in some of these parks, we don't have a network connection, so we have to build, either we have to do electricity, so we have to get We Energies to get a pole, get electrical.
Are we doing the-
We're doing the wireless, correct.
Okay.
But it's for like, for one camera to get We Energy, I mean, you're building it out for the future, so I guess it's a catch-twenty-two, but-
I don't know. It's just a question to me. I don't know if that's a better solution or not, because we're going that road, so maybe we should start getting some of the infrastructure in there, and doing that first, rather than finishing one section off, because if we can get the infrastructure in now, it's probably cheaper to get it in now than it is later. I don't know what people are thinking. I just bring it up as an idea.
Any thoughts from this side?
Well, I know the Boxhorn launch was pushed off. That was supposed to be this year. We pushed it off till next year. Is it a priority? I mean, I'm assuming that these are priority parks that we're taking because of equipment or whatever?
Correct. Yeah, I met with Scott and Tammy, and because of the investment in Sand Hill and Manchester, we wanted to move those up, because we didn't want those to get vandalized after the money was raised and spent in those parks, so that's why they kind of got moved up a little bit.
So when we put those parks in, we put the utilities in already, or we have to add them in?
Both. I mean, if-
Because that's another question I would have.
That's a Scott question.
And I'll tell you why I bring that up, is because if we're going to build another park, maybe we should put a box in there with some of those.
As we build it, yeah.
So when we sat down, we looked at this, we sit down, it was myself, Tammy, Barb, and Ryan. One thing is, we try to spread the cost over evenly, so that we're not trying to hit one over another. We look at priorities as well. We also know that some of them, we don't have to do much with the infrastructure. Let's hit these three with the cameras. For example, Idle Isle's been ever, been huge use so much, let's go hit them. Another point to take one step back. About the last two years, our parks have probably had some of the most vandalism that you could ever imagine. Horn, we were closing down parks early, we were closing down bathrooms. These cameras are deterring this type of vandalism. I'm not sure, the last person I believe, Alderman Kapusta, you were on the, and we were just talking about the vandalism. So this is our plan to solve this. That's why we're doing it for the parks. Why we're looking to do kind of certain ones. Boxhorn, no offense, it's kind of like pushed it down. We're kind of protecting the parks that we see the investments coming. Like Barb said, some of them, we have to put a really tall power pole up in order to get single back, and that's becoming more of a difficult challenge for us. I think Lake de Nune was one of those, but we're kind of working with the school district a little bit, trying to see if we could put something on their building back and forth. So our kind of plan of attack, how we push, there's rhyme and reason why we are choosing these plans. We look at both infrastructure and not. Now, let's say we don't have any new park, kind of, like brand-new park, like there's nothing there. We would probably plan for investments of making, like, We Energies or something, so that we could do cameras back. But yeah, we think about all that now when we kind of look at things. So that's kind of like our rhyme and reason when we did this. Yeah, so.
It's just a question. I was not done against finishing a park. I just don't know if it's better to spread it out.
That's just, and that's our rhyme and reason, and then two is not to kind of like, throw all the cost on one year. Let's just spread it out a little bit, too.
The two parks, I mean, kind of going back to Alderman Hamel's comment, and don't want to sound like I'm talking on both sides, but those, the two parks, Park Arthur and Idle Isle, will and do have the most use by non-community members that don't always have as much care for the surroundings as a Mesquite citizen might have, so getting more coverage than we have in both of those might make sense.
Just a curious question on, do we have signage along with them telling people that they are on candid camera?
No, we do not, but you can clearly see that there's now cameras everywhere, so.
Doesn't necessarily deter all of mine.
No, I wouldn't expect. I was just curious if we accompany it with that, to convince them that they better be.
Beware of dogs, type thing, right?
The signs might not be a bad idea, but do they-
And the sign has pretty paint on it.
The temptation, then, to dismantle the cam... I don't know. Maybe run a test somewhere?
We use them, guys, it's amazing how much we use them, not just for, like, anything of, example, was that field prep that day or not? You can go back and take a look at that. We can check. There's so many times, too, if we see a field prep that's not going wrong, we call the guy up, hey, we see you on camera, can you go finish this up? There's a lot of use that we have for them, so.
Just to kind of add to what they're all saying, when I prosecute these cases, there's nothing better than somebody sitting across the table and saying they don't know what I'm talking about, and then I flip them a picture, and it's them damaging the parks. So not only do I have a slam dunk case, I also ask for restitution to get the city the money back. So the cameras are really helpful in terms of prosecuting.
Any other questions, comments? Consensus? Yes, no?
Sure.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Here goes the technology. Okay. Moving on. Change and expand the city fiber network. As we're always looking for ways to save costs in the city and increase productivity in the city, I've been talking to the school district about having them hopping on, they became a NAC, which is like a POP, it's a-
English. Huh? English.
English. Sorry. They became an ISP, so-
Internet Service Provider.
Yes, thank you. Me and my techie language, I'm sorry. So, the school district, if you remember, a couple years back, buried a whole bunch of fiber throughout the city to connect their schools. And I priced out what it would cost for us to connect to the school district, and that cost came in fairly reasonable. Now, the reasons we would want to do this is just to give you a basic understanding. Right now, we have five hundred meg for the city as a whole. Costs us sixteen hundred and twenty dollars a month.
And that's through?
That's through Spectrum. And our contract with Spectrum expires this coming August of twenty-two, so that's kind of why I was bringing this up now. I've reached out to M C and E, who did the build-out for Mesquite Norway schools, and they gave me a price for a build-out to connect City Hall down to the road to the E S C. Now, what would this give us? It would give us better internet connectivity. We're talking from five hundred meg to probably ten gig. Less cost. On the third page, fees for one year would be like eighty-seven hundred dollars versus, if you do Spectrum, it's nineteen thousand dollars a year. So we would be saving approximately ten thousand dollars a year moving forward. The build-out would be a one-time cost of about forty-seven thousand dollars. There's a one-time fee to join Wiscnet, and there's a one-time router fee for We Can. We Can and Wiscnet kind of go hand-in-hand. It's an educational consortium where they try and get internet to the schools and cities at a cheaper rate. That's me, I'm sorry. So we were going down this road to look at a possible cost savings for the city. We Can also offers redundancy, security. Let's say a fiber line gets cut somewhere in the We Can network, they have basically another route that everybody would ride. Right now, if my Spectrum line gets cut, we're kind of dead in the water. We have a ten-meg connection from A T and T, but that's not going to do a whole lot for us for day-to-day. It would really do the essential services.
So it's sixty-four thousand to get connected?
Correct.
And you'll save ten thousand a year?
Correct.
And right now, you're spending seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand?
I'm spending nineteen thousand four hundred a year on five hundred meg.
So you're spending twenty, and you'll save half of that per year?
Correct.
Plus, plus, okay, so you're spending twenty, you'll spend ten, so you'll save ten.
Correct. The R O I for five years was like fifty-three thousand dollars.
Plus the speed difference, which-
Plus the speed difference.
If we weren't to do this, eventually, we're going to have to look at upgrading our speed, which would be, you look at what we're paying now, it's going to be more, so.
And everything's getting faster now?
Everything's getting faster, and as we try and transition things, maybe more to the cloud, off-site disaster recovery, we're going to need speed, and we're going to need bandwidth to do it. And right now, I don't have it to do.
I know, being on the library board, we had talks about this, too, and I know at one time, there was a line in the city, and we can't use it, and whatever, whatever, I don't know all the history, but did we look at possibly in the future, doing this with the library? Because libraries looking at doing some type of upgrades right now, it's going to cost money, so.
Correct. I have been down a lot of different roads, trying to get the library a better connection, a faster connection, and part of it was, I did do a cost build-out with M C and E to the library, and that cost came in at a hundred and one thousand dollars for us to build a line from here to the library.
Would be from here, you couldn't connect to the school, closer to them?
The school was about the approximate same cost, because the school will allow us to ride their conduit, however, we cannot ride their fiber. So we would still have to trench or construct from the libraries, let's say the Bay Lane, because that's the closest school. We'd have to bury fiber and then run it all the way back to the E S C to our point to go out to the internet at the E S C, if that makes sense.
But the conduit from the library to Bay Lane is the biggest expense.
Correct.
Once you get to a conduit, it's just pulling wire.
So does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, because I know it's been conversations and-
I've had extensive conversations with Brittany, and if this gets passed tonight, we've got a couple different options we can look at, because we've got a Badger Net line here, she's got a Badger Net line there. We might be able to do a point-to-point through the state a lot cheaper than Spectrum can give me quotes a build-out may cost. So I have looked at all that. It's just kind of dependent.
That's something else to talk about another time.
Okay.
It was a good point, because we've had extensive conversations on how to solve that problem, and we just haven't come up with a perfect solution yet.
So it is out there yet?
Any other questions on this? Consensus? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, third one. Storage area network, or a new SAN. For those of you who don't know what this is, this is a fairly large device that holds all our data. It's made up of a lot of disks.
It's a big hard disk.
It's a very big hard disk. Lots of redundancy built in. I think the mayor alluded last time at the last meeting that we had an emergency purchase of SAN, because we have lost some data in two of them that went down that were about ten years old. I was preemptively doing this, however, it just didn't wait. Equipment sometimes has a mind of its own. So this SAN should last us at least five years. It should give us continued growth as we continue to grow in the city, go paperless, scan documents, body cameras, video footage, security cameras, all of that information that we need to store and keep and present to the public. So the SAN is, it's a hundred and thirty thousand, but that's for a SAN and three hosts. What the hosts are, if you want to think of it, it's basically the brains. It's like a big C P U for your machine at home, but I would have three of them. Again, it's for redundancy.
Are they in different locations, or are they all in the same spot?
This would all be in the same spot. Next year, I'm looking if, since the fiber build-out was approved, I may cross fault to the school district with the old equipment.
Okay.
Is this new in the budget? This wasn't put in for this year, was it?
In previous years, no. This was, this was, this was brand-new for this year. It wasn't in my five-year prior beforehand. No, you are correct.
So you're looking for a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars?
Hundred and thirty, yeah, well, hundred and thirty-one, yes.
Projecting out, will this be able to handle the police cameras for the next number of years on?
Yeah, the new, the new storage, each SAN is eighty-four terabytes. Right now, we have approximately a hundred and eleven terabytes. And I don't want to get too technical and bore people, but I have to have redundancy built in.
I thought terabytes were extinct.
You have to have redundancy built in, and you have to have failover built in, and you have to have space to move V M's, virtual machines, or the virtual servers if they fail. So let's pretend that the P D, for some reason, goes down, and they have four terabytes of data. Well, I don't have space to move that four terabytes of data, so now they're dead in the water. So I need, I need the space to grow. This is for five years out, so this should more than accommodate us.
It's a five-year solution, if that's more what your question was.
Minimum, if not longer, but minimum, five years.
And it seems to be the trend with I T. It seems like we always run across that we don't have enough space. It's too slow, something, we're always totally upgrading and finding out about it the year of. You know, it kind of, if we had more of a future, it would be kind of nicer, but-
Part of that, too, is like-
I don't know if we can do that even.
With technology, like-
Changing so fast?
Yeah, and you get resolutions. Think what your TV was like ten years ago, and what your TV is now. The amount of space for one DVD doesn't fit on the DVD anymore. So it just, it takes up more space each and every year that goes by, so it's really hard to project and predict a lot of that.
Well, I know we got to have it, so.
Yeah, and I can put, I will put it in the capital for like another five, six years out, so it's there for next time. It just, yeah, it wasn't planned on this time.
Good use of landfill funds.
I'm sorry?
It's a good use of landfill funds, yeah.
Questions? Any more? Consensus?
Yep. And last but not least, I have copiers replacements. We have some copiers that are not end of, not nearing end-of-life quite yet, but they're getting heavily used, and those three departments right now are Finance, P D, and Library. Finance obviously runs a lot for the elections, P D, that's self-explanatory, and Library, that's self-explanatory. So what this is asking is if we get a couple copier replacements, like possibly three, four, three a year for the next three years, to replace the ones in the department, we own these copiers outright, therefore, they would kind of cycle down to spaces or areas that maybe we need a copier and we didn't have one before, or if something is really old and it just needs to go, you know, it's going to die, these would replace them.
What are the life of current copiers?
Probably about five years.
Three to five?
Three to five. They say about a million point eight copies, I think, roughly. And we're about five hundred thousand on some of these already. We only had them for a couple of years.
They're fairly disposable.
They are. It's like a printer these days.
They're all plastics on the inside.
Yep.
It's not like years ago where they actually had a metal frame.
Not anymore.
Questions? Comments?
Nope.
Consensus? Okay?
Yep.
That's really all I have, unless you guys have any questions for me on the five-year proposed capital budget on the back of my memo. I can answer anything.
Nice job keeping everything together, Barb. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys.
All right. Next up. Chief Westfall, you're in the hot seat. There's a memo in your packet as well, from the chief, and we're starting on page eleven within the capital, or the capital budget report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I told you I was going to ask you for a lot of things. This is the first start of that, and we're going to go through. The one thing I want to do is I want to focus on, I'm going to go in order. It may be out of order of what's in your memo, in order of priority for me, so that way you can understand where I'm coming from in terms of two thousand and twenty-two, and then we'll go beyond that when we're finished. So number one, ammo. If you've been paying attention to anything as far as ammo costs are concerned, they are going up, and you can't get nine-millimeter, you can't get forty-cal, you can't get forty-five. In terms of practice or duty, it's been extremely difficult, and we're at the mercy of how the supply chain works. And so we're behind, and I brought my muscle here in case you have any questions, we're behind in terms of the supply chain of like how it's working. We're still waiting on last year's order. And so this is just kind of almost a shell game. I'm taking it out of the operational budget, and I want to put it in the five-year capital budget. And what I want to do is I want to build an inventory, because we have the space over here, to make our inventory a little bit larger, so that I can at least forecast and do it a little bit better. If you'll see on there for two thousand and twenty-two, hopefully got corrected when we did this, sixty-eight thousand for this year in terms of, what I want to do is I want to get an inventory, and then I put it on for five years out again, and we'll see where we're at. Obviously, when we talk operational costs, you know that the city's growing, and I'm requesting additional officers as far as that's concerned, and working with Mayor Petfalski in terms of where our ammo budget is. One of the other things, and it came from a recommendation from one of my firearms instructors, too, of maybe we need to start focusing and harnessing in, because right now, we have the choice between nine-millimeter, forty-caliber, and forty-five, that maybe we need to just start looking more focused on the nine-millimeter, just to try to get those rounds and those type of things. So questions on ammo?
This is a five-year projection?
Yes.
Okay.
So you'll see it on there twice, Alderman Kabaki, of like, we're going to do it this year, and I'm putting it on five years out, but there's a possibility it could slide left or right, depending on how my inventory and where my officer usage is.
Okay.
What, are all your officers using the same caliber, or is it all personal selection, or how are you doing it?
It's currently personal selection, and that's why we have, and it makes it a little bit harder to gear. Approximately eighty percent probably now are transitioning to nine-mil, because we found that our accuracy increases with the smaller round. I'm still one of the old guys, I guess, that shoots a forty-caliber, so we still have some of that on hand. What I think we're going to do is, you know, all the new officers coming on board, we're just going to say, for simplicity's sake, it's going to be just nine-mil, so we can better categorize and better allocate where our rounds are coming from. So this is, like, it's my first, and it's my biggest, I need rounds. I want to get the order in as soon as I can to get my inventory at a certain level, and maybe then I can be the supplier and be Amazon later on.
So I guess that begs the question, I, you know, I don't know if any, often you guys try buying ammo, but we can't buy it often, so if you place this large order, is that even doable? I mean, is anyone going to sell you all of this?
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to get it. Obviously, we're not the biggest police department in the world, and you think about, a lot of our neighboring jurisdictions are ordering ammo at the same, so we're competing. You know, we got to get the cows at the trough, and we need to make sure, and if we're a bigger customer, then we get a little bit of economy of scale, if you think about how that works as well. And so now, instead of an annual purchase, we're going to do, try to do, and I'll come back to, hey, we're running short, or something's up with those. I'm just transitioning from operational to capital, and this is why we're doing it, so that hopefully I get a better idea and can forecast better for the future.
Any questions?
If you build up your stock that way, what's, is there a shelf life question about it, or is it-
There's shelf life considerations, but if you think about it, if you can shoot ammo for an extremely long time, as long as we keep the, where we're storing it in a proper location due to, you know, humidity, temperature, you know, those type of things. And thankfully, we have a nice new police department, and we have some room to store some ammunition.
You wouldn't want to have something stored for a couple of years, and then have about every fifth round not fire.
That's a problem, but we're, again, part of it is, actually, it would kind of help with our practice. For practice, we practice for the rounds not firing, but a lot of it is going to be practice ammo, but you'll see in here that the calculations that Captain Simonchev came up with also include duty ammunition, which is a hollow point versus a practice ball ammo.
Any more questions? Consensus?
Yep.
All right.
All right. The next thing that you're going to go through is you're going to see, I want to provide officers, and I believe that the two biggest things that I can provide my officers are resources and time. One of those things is resources, and if you've been paying attention to two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, you need to provide your officers resources. I think you guys are all on board with that. I have never heard anybody say something like, defund the police here, when it comes to those types of things. We need to put the right resources in the hands of our officers to make sure that we're hiring the best and brightest here, and they're making the right decisions on the road. Part of that is number two, tasers. Why am I looking at twenty-five tasers? Well, I'm going to start with the beginning. We're increasing our numbers that we have. The tactical incidents over the last two months have shown me that we don't have enough tasers currently on the road when we're calling in additional shifts for additional manpower, and then we don't have enough to cover multiple shifts when we have a bigger incident. That's number one. Number two, we're, TASER, it's just like, kind of when Barb talks about, like, her I T stuff. I'm at the mercy, TASER and Axon is like a monopoly when it comes to this stuff, and we're at the mercy of what they have. They're transitioning from what's, and I'm going to hopefully- They're transitioning from what's, and I'm gonna hopefully, that X26, X26P, the old TASER models, all of ours are black. If you paid attention to 2021, I want to move to a TASER 7, which only comes in yellow. And you can look at Dante Wright from Minneapolis of the number one reason why we want to switch to yellow tasers versus black tasers. Okay? Because we want to make sure that we're, one more cue that we're not grabbing the wrong thing. If you check out Sergeant Monreal there, it's a cross draw, a crosses body and we do that by policy. Right there, it's a cross draw and those type of things, but currently it would be black, but I want to change it to yellow for obvious reasons. The new TASER also gives an additional option of the short range and a long range capability to utilize those. And of course, they're very expensive, but it gives me short and standoff distance when we're dealing with somebody that's a threat. So that's the reason why I'm asking for tasers and you'll see in there, I'm actually asking for the TASER replacement cartridges because we're gonna be changing kind of, right now we're piecemealed. We have two different versions of the TASER. We have X26P and the X26. This is an entirely new platform. So it's gonna require a little bit more training on all of our officers to get them outfitted with this less lethal device. Questions on TASER?
So is this a full replacement of what you have now?
Yes.
And then what are you gonna do with the existing equipment you have?
Because it's such a different platform, we're gonna sell it back to either another buyer or we're gonna sell it back to TASER themselves is what we're gonna work out. I wish I could tell you it's like some sort of grand amount of money we're gonna get back. Probably not.
Okay. So you currently, how many tasers do you have currently?
We have nine X26Ps in service, about 15 total. And then we have X26, the older generations of that 26 on the road with certain individuals. But I'm asking to go to 25 for those reasons. Also, they break. And we started when we replaced the tasers the last time, they, after the warranty runs out, classically, the warranty will run out and then a trigger gets busted. One is, was recovered from the bottom of the retention pond outside Walmart. That was an interesting case. Talk about that one later. And conveniently, those electric, conducted electric weapons don't work very well after they've been submerged.
So you're looking for 25 in 2022 or no?
Yes, 25 for 2022.
And then one a year after that, is that what you're looking?
The, the additional ones on the capital that goes out, that's actually cartridge replacements. So that's to handle our training, to make sure that we have the accurate cartridges that are in place and that, because we are required to shoot so many live cartridges annually, that we can all stay certified on that, on that platform.
How many cartridges does $6,100 cover approximately? Sarge?
On the spreadsheet? TASER requires that you, my name is Jeff Monreal, by the way. I'm a sergeant in the city. Or you never met me. TASER requires that each officer fires two cartridges right now. So right now we have one, one set cartridge.
Any volunteers?
I'm sorry?
He wanted the volunteer.
Being a wise guy, just.
Absolutely. 100% I will wholeheartedly. That's all. TASER requires that you have to fire two cartridges, take a written test and go through a PowerPoint. I mean, this is annually certified in the event.
Please talk in front of the microphone.
In the event that something happens. And that's to be covered by their legal team in the event that something happens, you have a catastrophic death, in custody death. So with the new platform, it's a close quarters cartridge, usually within 12 feet, and a longer distance cartridge, which gets you out to the 25 feet. TASER is going to require that each officer fires four cartridges to be certified.
So you can shoot either one, you can either, so it has four shots in it?
Two shots.
Two shots, okay. Short or long?
But you have to do each, you have to do each one twice to be certified, to be blessed by TASER, so to speak. So it would be four cartridges per officer at 40 officers. It's, in cartridges alone, it's like $38 a cartridge.
Okay.
It is very expensive, unfortunately, but this is our option.
What that does as well, and I forgot to mention one of the biggest things that it does, TASER a lot of times, and I'm a former TASER instructor myself, a lot of times the cartridges that are on the end, for whatever reason, they don't work. And what I mean by that is like, it's not, they'll have a disconnect, a clothing disconnect, one of those type of situations. What TASER 7 offers, and of course, it's the sales pitch from TASER, it's, there's two cartridges loaded into each one.
Please use the microphone.
You can turn those other two on.
Yeah, just, you can.
Just camera.
Just pretend like karaoke. There you go.
How you doing? All right. I'm ready. Yeah, so you had two cartridges on every single TASER. Every single officer has two. What that does is that doubles the capacity for less lethal on every single officer on the road. So if you have a problem and you miss with your first TASER deployment, you can move right into that next with another trigger pull, which is giving, again, I'm talking about officers, you need to, we all, I want to have options on the road to make sure that they're making the right decisions at the right time, especially when it comes to use of force. There is no greater liability for the city when it comes to that. And I think the last couple of years have proven that.
I assume these new ones still have the contacts on too, so you have your third option of direct.
Are you volunteering?
No. I've done this.
Yes. You can, you can do what's called a contact and you, you can do that at close distance.
Any questions? Any more questions, I should say? Consensus? Yes?
Yep.
All right.
And keeping, and going down priority and keeping with less lethal options, because less lethal options, hear me out of like why we keep focusing on that theme. When it comes to a deadly force scenario, and unfortunately I have to, and Sergeant Monreal is one of my use of force firearms instructors with me, we have to prepare for the worst day. And the worst day is gonna be either when one of our officer gets hurt or we're gonna be involved in a deadly force incident, which the mayor and I are gonna be in constant communication regarding that. Ultimately, what I want to make sure is we have to go down almost, it's called the defense and arrest tactics, and make sure that we go down every use of force scenario to make sure that all these officers have everything that they need or could have had used in a certain scenario. Because all those questions and all those things are gonna come up. So next is a 40 millimeter. And you're like, what's a 40 millimeter? Well, number one, it looks like, you know, a kind of a rocket launcher type of situation. We've had one and it was called an SL6 and it shoots a baton round, okay, which gives us greater distance.
I brought props.
We brought props. It's a baton round that you bring and ultimately what that does is it gives, it's a standoff distance, you know, roughly, what, 25, 20 feet that you can use to incapacitate or impede, am I saying that correctly? Impede sergeant? To impede a subject at a distance and you use that to, if you're actually, the aim point for that is the extremities. It's not like chest, it's legs and arms and it's at a distance. And why you want that at a distance, if you're thinking about tasers is like maybe 25 feet, this gives us you another option from distance. If you're involved with a, possibly a subject that maybe, maybe it's a bladed weapon or an ed weapon and you have distance and cover, you don't have to resort to deadly force. You can utilize other things. Deadly force will still be there. I'm not saying it's an end-all be-all, but ultimately our SL6, our current version is broken. It's 20 years old. I'm asking for a 40 millimeter launcher so that we can utilize a baton round in certain circumstances. Questions on that?
Is that old one, is that the one with the cylinder that looks like a?
Yes, sir.
Like a bazooka?
Yes, sir. If you've been to Citizens Academy or seen that, you have to wind it up, it's, it's broken. So this is a replacement item.
I got to shoot it off in an O4.
Is this a standalone weapon or does, is it an attachment to a?
This is a standalone weapon.
Is it? Okay.
It's a dissuader.
Questions? So we're just looking at one of these?
It would be two.
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 It would be two along with the, the aim point optic that goes with it, the training kits that go with it to fire different training rounds, because the training rounds are cheaper. And then the actual live rounds themselves to go with it.
So two of them with all, is $5,000? Am I looking at that right?
Yes.
And we're not, we're not looking to add another one in the future, it looks like?
We are not. The 40 millimeter is a specialty weapon. Each squad car carries, and we're gonna go into other less lethal option, we have a beanbag shotgun as well. So each squad carries a beanbag shotgun, which sometimes we call orange. Okay? And it gives less lethal options. These 40 millimeter cannons go where, with the supervisor specifically, and it's a greater distance than that shot, than the, the less lethal, the orange shotgun.
Specifically why we're, why we're picking this round in this platform versus our orange less lethal shotgun. The less lethal shotgun is good to, says 100, 100 feet. It loses kinetic energy and loses accuracy at about 60. It, it really dies off. These, the, the less lethal shotgun hits with about 100 foot pounds of kinetic energy on somebody. Those, that round specifically, and speaking with other departments and why we're actually jumping to this with our tac team, it, it hits with 232 foot pounds of kinetic energy. It, we want to stop and impede their, their momentum, impede their movements and get them to comply with us so we do not have to use more force on them.
Or if it's a situation, obviously we're looking at distance, we don't want to close that distance from a position of cover or from a position of advantage to make it in a more difficult scenario.
Out of curiosity, how accurate are these things?
They're actually really accurate.
Extremely.
Even, if you probably remember the SL6, you can.
Yeah, I remember that one.
Yeah, it's pretty accurate.
It's very accurate. We were up to 120 feet. It was point of aim, point of impact. And it hits with a lot of kinetic energy behind it.
He's not supposed to hit the sensitive areas, but for some, well, never mind. In training.
Any other questions? Consensus?
Question back on the, on the last subject.
Yes, sir.
What is the warranty on the?
TASER you're talking about or the?
The tasers, yeah.
Okay.
One year.
It's a one-year warranty on the TASER and we did the cost benefit analysis. If you go into the, the notes, they have different programs. Of course, they're trying to get you into, it's almost like buying a car with TASER or Axon of, oh, you can get the five-year lease and you can get the two-year program and these type of things. We've had a lot of success with them. Yes, some of them break, but if we buy extras, we're actually ahead as opposed to doing like a lease to own type program. Because we've been using TASER for so long, we've kind of worked it out that generally speaking, every time we've made a TASER purchase, we have been ahead in the purchase as opposed to a lease program. All right. Next item is windows. This is kind of interesting. If you've ever been in here in a meeting, and I'm talking about all these windows right here. And if you've ever been in here in a meeting, like this beautiful new building and they put up that insulation cardboard on the windows, because if you've been in there, it blows cold air consistently through those windows. Those windows are original to the building from when City Hall was here. It's one of those things and I'll get to it in a second. A couple of things were scrapped due to budget constraints when you guys were redoing and redoing the police department and City Hall. These windows were being one of them. If you notice in my estimate from Milwaukee Glass, I actually did the outs, exterior outside windows, which are the sergeant's office when you walk in. However, they're all sealed shut. And I'm just gonna focus on these internally where Officer Sartorius is right now. And what that actually does is our internal climate control is all kind of messed up because of all this airflow that comes from these windows open and close and those type of things. So I'm asking for replacement of some of my internal windows.
Rick, help me understand that. Why, why would that have to come out of the police budget?
Sharon?
I don't get that.
I mean, we, typically everything in the police department.
Police department, so it has to be associated.
Everything out of the police, that whole building comes up, just like the library. You know, library roof comes out of the library budget.
Is, is it cheaper to get sweaters or windows?
It is cheaper to get sweaters. Well, actually if I did a.
Sick time and everything else.
If I did a climate control study of like how much, because we're cranking, and I, no, it's an honest question, Alderman Wolf. I've thought about that, but it's, it's really messing up the internal climate control. And if you, if you pay attention to those large buildings and that kind of stuff, our bills, and I wish I had the dollars and cents of what you would save, but I assume if we have a more.
Efficient window.
Efficient building, we're gonna have more efficient, you know, energy costs.
There should be some sort of ROI and enough to justify it, but it's, yes.
How many windows total?
Say it again, sir.
How many windows total?
It's, it's seven total windows down this whole interior courtyard.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Okay.
$2,000 a window? Not bad.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Consensus?
Yeah. Yep.
All right. I'm gonna bring back my muscle. Pepperball. This is an interesting one that is a relatively new technology and we're asking for two. Now, the picture's a little bit different because it's actually the pistol version. We're asking for the, basically it's on an AR or rifle version. And you're gonna ask, well, why do we need a pepperball? What is that going to do? But I will tell you that Sergeant Monreal has used it specifically and used it in a live format specifically when they went down for.
Wauwatosi.
Wauwatosi.
Civil unrest.
And civil unrest. And then they also brought it with them to when we supported Milwaukee. And I believe that they used something similar in Kenosha.
Yes, they used several of these in Kenosha.
All right.
Not specifically, but.
But why do we need a Muskego then? Because hopefully we don't have to deal with those things. But again, it's about giving options to our officers on the road. This is what we consider an, almost like an area denial type less lethal. And then here's the classic example. If you have a suspect that doesn't want to get out of the car, okay, are we gonna wait all day? Or are we gonna walk up to the car and put spray or something into the car to try to get them to come out? With a pepperball, you can from a distance, if you get a 90 degree, you can actually put the pepperball into the car and hopefully that will get the person to, you know, gain compliance is ultimately your goal. Instead of going up on the car, we're trying to increase distance, increase tools and allow those things to work properly to get them to exit on their own as opposed to trying to pull someone out of a car. What it'll also do, obviously we've had several tactical deployments here recently, you could use a pepperball in a specific area as an area denial type weapon system. Put it in a specific room so that we know that they can't go into a specific room or at least they can, but it would be uncomfortable. Because what it is, is it's using the OC, which is basically your highly ground up cayenne pepper that goes into this. pepper that goes into this. Now, of course, the cayenne pepper, think paintball, but with cayenne pepper inside, and that's exactly what it does. And what we also do with this is we'll also purchase inert, almost like baby powder, so that every third round, so you can almost use it as a warning type device and those type of things. Am I missing anything on pepperball, Sergeant Munreal?
No, the area denial is, we're getting, we're getting out of the realm of why send a, a police officer who is a husband or wife, father, et cetera, up to a vehicle when that person does not want to get out of the vehicle? For what reason? We do not know. They carry all kinds of different weapons, and it, it's, it's very easy for them to access something that can hurt us or kill us. This is a better option of after pursuit would end, or you have a subject that simply doesn't want to be arrested, not coming out of the vehicle, rather than trying to struggle with them and causing serious injury to them and/or us, this is an option for us to back off a little bit and from covert or concealment, get some what's called PAVA, that's the pepper, into this vehicle and help coax them out by introducing inflammatory to them.
And the pepper, because we have many levels in the defense and arrest tactics, you know, hierarchy of force or however you want to word it, pepper is generally lower than your, those baton rounds. So depending on their actions dictate what we're doing, this gives us another option at a different level of force.
Correct. What, what the chief is talking about, the, the indirect or area denial, that can be at a lower level of force versus a direct impact where I'm actually hitting a subject with these. And the standoff distance on a pepperball launcher is zero feet. I can walk up to somebody and, and hit them with, point-blank with a pepperball. There's very little risk of, of it impaling them and causing penetration.
So Sergeant Munreal.
Yes, sir.
Someone's in a car, and they refuse to get out. And how, how's this weapon deployed through, does it break the glass or?
There are special rounds, they're called glass breaker rounds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
It does break glass, and you can do it from a far distance. And if, either that or if you have to, you can send up a, not to talk tactics, but a team with a, a shield and a rifle as well as a, a person with a, a break and rake tool, break a window, and then you can back off, and then you can go about introducing the irritant at that point from a distance.
Well, I'm all in favor of keeping our officers away from harm.
Me too.
So then how many of these are we looking for with this?
Two.
Two again? Okay. Because it doesn't say on here, just, just for record.
Again, the theme is less lethal options.
In the, in the breakdown on the document, there should be two pepperball launchers, two aim-point optics, the optic you need to see in zero, and then two electronic hoppers that are capable of holding a hundred and fifty projectiles in them, and then all the projectiles with them, the live, the inert, and the glass breaker rounds.
Any other questions? Consensus?
All right. Thank you, Sergeant Munreal. Now, it's on to an interesting one, to say the least. I'm going to ask for a laundry room, but hear me out on it. If you go in the basement of our police department, we have a citizens academy going on this evening. Because we have citizens academy there, we have to shut off and lock our locker rooms because we're utilizing that classroom space across from the bathrooms, and, and then that, those bathrooms have access to our locker rooms, our locker rooms have access to all of our personal equipment, sometimes including some of our weapon systems, which are locked up in, in those type of things. We are now hosting training because of the police department that we're in now. If you go down there, we have two old bathrooms and a utility closet that are the same two bathrooms downstairs, if you remember coming to the common council chambers from years ago, and the pictures and the tile and the brown water are all in there. Yes. Am I aware of that laundry room? Do we really need it? But it was cut from the budget previously when they were redoing to, to make sure that we came in under budget. Here's what I'm really asking for on this one. This one's a culture thing for me of when my officers come into the police department, it's unfinished. We have a nice, beautiful, new police department, it's unfinished. And when I'm showcasing the police department, I had an officer in on Thursday, recruitment and retention, a lot of you have heard what I'm talking about, what I need to do here at the city of Mesquite go to get the best and brightest here, and that's, we have to change the way we're talking about bringing in new people. And my two that are in background checks right now are from the city of Racine and from the city of Milwaukee. My last hire was from the city of Kenosha, the one previous to that was from a retired from the city of Milwaukee. If you track my trends, I want to pick up officers that have training and experience from other municipalities and also the best and brightest that are the young people, bring them into the police department. Now, with that, in my meeting on Thursday, I completely understand they're interviewing me as much as I'm interviewing them. Okay? We have to sell what Mesquite go is, and it's the support of the common council, the mayor, our city employees, and the people here are how I'm getting people in here, even when the pay may not match up specifically. But that's what I'm trying to sell. And when we come in, I show them a tour of the police department. I like to show them, hey, here's what we have, here's where we're going, here's what I want to do. And this laundry room is one of those things, and I'm not saying this is the lowest on my priority for 2022, because I, I went with absolute construction, which was this, whoever did this, I just said, hey, you already have the designs and those type of things, how much would it cost to finish this? That's where they came in with that specifically. What I want to use that for is when our officers in the last year have gotten feces, vomit, spit, saliva on themselves, yes, we can take it to a cleaner specifically, or, you know, I talked about the person that fell into the retention pond with their TASER, that we can wash all that without having to get in their car. Or when Sergeant Munreal does his pepperball with all of you, we can wash all the stuff over there before taking it home. So that's kind of where we're at. I have, what I got back from absolute was less than ideal. You can see they sent me an email as opposed to everybody else sends me an estimate of like, okay, here's what they think it's going to cost. Clearly, I have to do a little bit more as far as those things are concerned. But that's the reason why that one's there.
Questions? Comments?
You know, if you coin out this, I've heard this in some.
Coin it? I, we had chatted a little bit about this.
Yeah.
When we're looking big picture, for me, this is one that was at that category of, what's the overall budget going to look like? And it sounded like you were in that category of this is the, if we're going to trim something, like this would be that one to trim.
Yes.
So I'm hesitant to say yes on it, but again, until we get to that, this is what we're looking at for the bottom line. I think this would be one that potentially could fall off if, at least for, for me, where I'm looking at voting kind of that overall dollar figure, so.
If I was going to make a suggestion to you, I would look at everybody else's first and come back to this and put this at the complete bottom. Yes, I want to finish it. Yes, I, but I also need a little bit of time to make sure, let's put the right thing in there, but I would like to allocate some money so that I can have a budget to go back to. But again, let's see what, that would be my recommendation to you as well.
What does one twenty buy for us?
Basically, what I did is, and this is, this is what I sent them of, it's a laundry room, they're going to re-pipe everything, they're going to put the washers, the dryers in there, they're going to put the tables, they're going to put the, they're going to expand, turn one into a nice unisex bathroom down there as opposed to the, it's kind of three bathrooms right now. If you know the facility, and then there's a janitor's closet down there. And ultimately, what that's going to do is you're going to have an area where they, like a folding area, multiple washers and dryers so that you can take care of all your equipment in-house as opposed to hopping in your car after a shift and doing those type of things.
So is that what people do now? Take it home or take it to wherever?
Yes. And COVID is one of the other reasons that I was looking at this of like, there's just been a lot of stuff we've had. Bedbugs, we.
Oh, go, go ahead. To give you guys another example, not to tell war stories, but on a Christmas Eve, when you get sent to a deceased person or he's about to expire, and you make, who's now a chief crawl through a window, and you guys get covered in puke and feces on Christmas Eve, and your clothes are nowhere to get cleaned, this would be a great, great benefit to that, so you don't have to take them home. The other, the other personal thing I can think of immediately is you get dispatched to a person that hasn't been heard from for about two weeks or three weeks, and you have to make entry into that house. When you come back after that person is, is confirmed deceased, after you've been there investigating, you smell horrible, to the point where you walk by your dispatchers and your dispatchers are gagging. It would be nice on a Sunday if we don't have to bag them up and let them stink more and rot more, if we could get them into a laundry facility very fast, for what it's worth.
Thanks for the description. I think that might.
Well, the question, question I got is that this is landfill funds. What is that going to do to our landfill funds? Is it fine?
Everything is a cent.
Yeah.
So everything in, that's being proposed, we should be able to fund through the landfill. However, I've, looking at projections, it looks like our funding is coming down for the next year by a couple hundred thousand. So this year, we would be okay, but going forward, I would just want you to be aware that those were probably going to be going down.
Are you talking on both sides of the budget or just this? Just capital?
Capital side.
Just capital.
Okay. I didn't know, I didn't know if you were just making a general statement.
No.
And then, so, and we'll go back to the police station. So if we, we can't do this, or we decide not to, however you want to say it, because of the funds, what is the next option of adding some machines down there just to get something started before we can budget for this for future years?
The, the next option is just push it, and that's why it's on capital. We can push it to 2023, I can come back to you with a different plan.
But it would be working, something started in an area of a couple of machines or something?
We could, we could, you know, and then obviously washer and dryer is not too expensive. It's just a matter of.
You got to get the plumbing and, and you got to.
Correct.
And you want to get in the spot close to where you're going, because if you can add piping, you want to, you want to do it all smartly, but, okay, just a question.
It's really, and it's a big picture of finishing.
Police officer recruiting is difficult, if not impossible in some cases. Retention of officers is also crucial.
And expensive.
And expensive, very expensive. If this hires us one or one and a half officers, it's paid for itself.
And keeps them.
And keeps them.
Yeah.
What are other departments, do other departments have this type of facilities?
Some do, some don't, you know.
Some of our size, for instance.
Yeah, we're, we're competing against.
Like a Brookfield or?
Brookfield, New Berlin, Franklin, some of them have similar type things, but some of them do not. I don't have the specifics right now.
Okay. I was just wondering, it's just not a big deal.
Even in Milwaukee, some districts have it, some don't. My neighbor works for, I think he's in Seven, and brings home his bloody stuff in a bag, and I've heard his, it's not, it's not nice. You know, this, this would be something that if you were looking for a new job, would probably be nicer at home.
It's nice, and that's kind of why it's the last on my priority. But it is part of where I want to go. Obviously, I'm a new chief, I want to try to finish, and it's a culture thing when we walk in, beautiful new police department.
Well, I would say that if, if Sharon says we're, we're fine and we're looking okay, and I, I don't have a problem with leaving it in, and.
Yeah, if we have the landfill funds to do it.
Everything that's, as Sharon said, everything that's being proposed in the capital budget this year, we can fund. So if you don't fund it, what it's going to do is add, you know, it'll go in, it'll still stay in that fund that maybe next year, when those numbers go down, it'll allow you to get something different, but, yeah, it's, this will have, this has no impact one way or the other on the tax rate per se, because that's going to be all operating, which is going, that's a whole other nightmare that we're talking about. This is, this part of the budget, we're okay on.
Or we just move some stuff out of operating to capital.
Don't think I'm not doing that already.
I think it's highly needed, and you should go for it. I only ask that you check with other vendors, because.
Correct.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I think you'll get much better.
And, and you probably could get some figures back to us before we do the budget. You could probably get some quotes going right away.
Okay.
I mean, if it's, if we're going forward with it, why not get started with it?
I went with just who was here and would have had the numbers. I, I thought one twenty was kind of hard, high for what I was asking for personally based upon what they came back with.
It's a number.
I don't, do you need to start your?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So is there anything else in yours or?
I'd just like to comment on a couple of things. These are my 2022 items. I just real quickly want to just comment on a couple of things that you can see out there. Obviously, for ammo, I will put it on four or five years. One of the kind of things that's floating out there is our body cameras are dying at a kind of a rate that is frustrating. I told you that Axon slash TASER is now the monopoly on a lot of stuff. Well, they have also purchased, the, the company that we are purchasing our body cameras through, which is Safari Land, they now own Safari Land, that's who has them. We're piecemealing them on a case-by-case basis, but basically, they're a few years old, and they're just kind of wearing out, and they're falling apart, those kind of things. That's, that's kind of the nature of the beast of where we're going. Barb and I have sat down and we've had some initial conversations. That's the big 2023 item for me of we have to take a look at our body cams, and it might be an Axon-type situation. It also might be, and she talked about the SAN, but this is where you get into those acronyms I don't understand of cloud storage and, you know, those type of things that we may have to work together on in terms of getting those type of things. I just want some of these items to be on your mind when I'm talking about a five-year projection on those type of things. The other one that, that came up, Alderman Hamill hit, you hit me up about, what's up with the motorcycle? Here's what I will tell you in front of everybody. We have a speeding problem in Mesquite go, and I have a problem in terms of getting the number of traffic stops back up to par. I've been working with Mayor Petfalski, he's aware of it. There's probably not a day that goes by that I don't get a complaint either from you or from someone. I wish I could tell them they're crazy, but they're not. We are busy on different calls for service, and we're not meeting expectations. A motorcycle, number one, is for community, community policing, and then number two, it's going to give us a different advantage in the summertime to utilize kind of a smaller apparatus to get into those subdivisions and get some traffic enforcement on a different capacity. And then lastly, it kind of throws a bone, because he's, Jeff's looking at me, because some of the officers want to ride a motorcycle in the summer, recruitment and retention. So it's, it hits multiple prongs of what I'm going for. And again, that's 2024, so I have a lot more research to do before I come to you full circle.
And Harley has been known to donate those to police departments.
Interesting.
If that doesn't work, Officer Fons brought something interesting to work today that you could maybe.
Okay.
Maybe use up.
Again, I know I went over, but those are the things I want you to be focused on.
For a price.
All right. We have to, unfortunately, we do have to adjourn this meeting for, because we have a public hearing we got to jump to, and then we'll jump back into this, so. Thank you. So at this moment, at 6:06 PM, I'm going to put the committee whole in recess and give the clerk a moment to switch the recordings, and then we'll jump into the common council meeting.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Brittany, how you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you?
All right. So we're going to be talking about the library. It's on page twenty-three in the capital budget packet, and she also.
Brittany. Brittany. I have that one up. Is that easier for you?
Should be on, I think.
Hello? Okay. And I'm just the right height for it, too. Excellent. All right. Well, great to see you all, and I just wanted to say thank you as always on behalf of the library for your support in the past years. I know this is very important work, so we thank you for it. Just to give you a little, you know, you have a macro look on the things that you do for the city, just to give you a micro example of your impact. On August nineteenth and twenty-one minutes, we had so many different things happen that were so important to the community. We had a hundred school bus drivers in our public meeting rooms to get safety training for the year. We had fifty kids in our parking lot looking at dinosaur fossils and me. We had, we were helping patrons who had a spouse in the hospital get some media for entertainment. We were helping landlord make copies so that he could, you know, support his business. All those things happened in twenty-one minutes, and if you, you know, extrapolate that over the course of the entire year, there's a lot of different things going on at the library. All those things happened because of the amazing library staff that this community has, but it's all made possible because of the council and the mayor. So just giving you a little snapshot before we dive in.
Is that your buttering up pert? Is that your buttering up pert?
Yes. Now, the question is.
You used half your time already, just so you know, you used half your time already.
Let me know in the future if I should go longer on the butter or shorter. It's helpful for me.
It depends if you want to go longer on the budget or shorter.
All right. So page twenty-three, carpeting and flooring. We have been repart, carpeting the library in phases, and this is the last little bit of carpeting for the library, so replacing that last bit of twenty-one-year-old carpet. Would like to time it in 2022 alongside one of the other capital projects I'm going to be asking for a bit later, our circulation desk. The value of having this project done at the same, in the same years, the circulation desk is that it allows us to install the carpet and then install the desk on top of it, so we don't have any of those pesky carpet seams rolling back. The other added value to this project is there is a tiled atrium in the library lobby. If you recall, we have beautiful sweeping ceilings, and what happens is though the tile is lovely aesthetically, every time staff roll their book carts by, it makes this amazing rattling noise, which is not great for acoustics, and it happens right in between our two service desks. And so we'll be talking to patrons, and then a book cart goes by, and then we all have to stop and stare at each other for a little bit and wait for the, the cart to go by, and then we can start talking again. So my goal is to carpet over that tiled atrium so that that doesn't happen. So that's the first project.
Questions?
So your projection last year was about under seven?
Yeah.
So the other 4,000 is for carpeting over?
For the, the tiled area. It was an idea that came to me, I never thought to tile, to carpet over that tile area. And then one day after a poor patron got, you know, drowned out by the carpet, I thought, I bet I could. That's the exact area where we're carpeting anyway for the circulation area. And I thought, I bet if I also carpet this section right next to it, I could improve a lot of communication problems we've been having. So.
So is that ceramic tile there?
Ceramic tile?
Well, is it like, I guess my point being is, is it an elevation difference? Is it more than just throwing carpet over it?
They're going to have to demo out the tile and then put the carpet.
Oh, so they're taking out the tile?
Yep.
Of course, most people are doing just the opposite.
I know, I know. And like I said, the aesthetic's beautiful, the function is awful. I know, I know. It will still have some tile, but this would, this would help us quite a bit. So.
Questions, comments? Consensus? All right.
All right. So page 24, the public furniture. This is another project that we've been phasing over the years, just trying to replace some of our furniture with newer furniture. Again, the furniture is original to the building, 21 years old. It starts to break, it starts to wobble, it's not ADA compliant. And so, you know, we're just moving in some new furniture, a table like this exactly, so that we can raise and lower it for certain, like our copying station and other like booth seating and new tables that have better ADA clearance. So this is just the next round to improve that furniture. The cool thing is that the furniture from the previous phase has given us an opportunity to really see what has been effective, what the patrons, you know, like and don't like. And the good news is they like it all. We see them, because I watch all the time, not creepily, just the right amount of watching. And what I see is that they're gravitating towards that newer furniture. They're gravitating towards that booth seating, they're gravitating towards the chairs that have a bit of cushion. They're gravitating, gravitating towards the new tables that have larger workspaces so that people can spread out their papers, their laptop, their coffee, their, you know, their phone. People like to spread out. And so all of this new furniture has been really effective and people are using spaces that they had never used before because we put all the furniture there. So this, it has been successful, these phased furniture projects. And so now we're looking to just continue to bring better furniture to the patrons.
Questions? Consensus?
Yep.
Page 25, this is the RFID or the radio frequency identification project that I would like to do for the library. This is an RFID tag. And what we're, what we're wanting to do is put one in each of our library materials. So it would go in every book, every media that we have. The value of it is that we can code these RFID tags with the library items. And it ends up allowing us for a host of efficiencies and improved services. The cool thing is, aside from all the improved things that it can do, is it brings us annual savings. Because right now, the hardware and software that we have is, I'll say ancient. And what it's doing is it's causing us to have to pay higher maintenance costs on all of our hardware. The newer stuff has cheaper maintenance costs. And the RFID tags are actually cheaper. This is the security measure that, you know, if you, if you try to liberate this book from our library without checking it out first, the gates will be, the security gates. These tags are actually cheaper per item than the security strips that we have in the book. So that allows us to have annual savings. So that's a, that's a first good thing about it. And then the second, the improved services. These RFID tags allow us to not have to search and look for a barcode every time we're, we're scanning it. You can just set it on a pad and it automatically checks it out. You may think that doesn't save a lot of seconds of time, but we're part of a 24-member library system and they all put their barcodes in different places just to be super fun. And so, you know, the amount of time you're, you're looking. So that, that helps our patrons who are at the self-check. They set it on the pad, it automatically checks it out. It helps our staff members when they're helping patrons with checkout. So there's a lot of seconds that we can shave off these transactions, which, again, seconds do matter when you're a parent that has a stack of like 30 children's books waiting to be checked out and little Timmy's headed for the front door already because they are done and your other kid is just ready to have a tantrum on the floor. Those seconds matter in those self-check moments. So it makes our self-check system better. Our self-check, I hate our self-check. I'm on the record as saying I hate it. It was like a four or five-step process and you have to angle the book just right to check it out, but then you have to hold it for just three seconds. If you do it longer, the system errors out. If you don't notice it, then the book doesn't technically check out to you. And then you try to leave the library, it's not on your account. If the security system doesn't catch it, it, the book could disappear because you don't get the reminder notice saying you have it checked out. The new self-check is set it on the pad, it checks it out. So there's a lot of really cool features that will help not only our staff, but really help our patrons have a better experience. It's better security for, for our items and better account, accountability. And, you know, our, our collection is valued at about $2.3 million. And so we do, you know, whatever we can do to protect that investment on behalf of the citizens is helpful. So those are just some of the benefits of RFID. There are definitely more. Why now? Our infrastructure is aging. We, our gates are old, we keep having to gut them and, you know, duct tape new pieces in. I'm being a little dramatic, but not quite. Our self-check machine is buzzing. We don't know why. It just keeps buzzing. And we've had people come out and try to fix it, but we've had to gut it a couple of times and it's, it's not doing great. We have the items that take away the, or desensitize the security tape so that, that people can leave the library with items. One of them died a couple of years ago. We're hesitate, we're hesitant to invest thousands of dollars in a new one when that's not the new technology. The second one, I call old wiggly because the cord is about to fall off and we don't think we can repair that. And then we're just down to one. And if you're wondering how old the technology is, it's beige. So we all know beige technology is old.
At least it's not harvest gold, so that's.
That's true. It's not harvest gold, but it is beige.
Will, will this RF technology work with the other libraries? Are they doing it? So when you check in and out and transfer books and things like that?
Yeah, you know, that is another great feature. So aside from the annual savings, aside from the efficiencies and ease of use for our staff and patrons. So we are part of a 24-member library system. We exchange books with all of them. We have sent 23,000 of our items out since between January and July alone. That allows us to be a net lender, which allows us to exempt from the Waukesha County Library Tax. But we're all part of that system. So far, 13 of the libraries have already moved to RFID and there's at least three or four more that are planning on doing it next year. The more libraries in our system that do it, the larger the efficiencies are gained. And specifically, our partner, our neighbor libraries of Big Bend and New Berlin are already on RFID. The significance of that locally is that we do share patrons. We have lots of New Berlin patrons that come here because they love our children's programming, same with Big Bend. And, but they also use, you know, their libraries as well. And imagine a pick and save where you use the self-check at one pick and save and it works a certain way and looks a certain way. And then you go to a different pick and save down the road and it's completely different. That's what's happening to our, our shared patrons. They're, you know, using our self-check with the amazing four-step glitchy system. And then they go to New Berlin and they go. So it, it's just, it's easier for them because we do have Muskego patrons that go to New Berlin as well and to Big Bend. It's easier for them if that hardware is similar.
So if you transfer books to another library or, or I would say fill the order before another library fills it, because a list goes out, if I correct, right? List goes out to all the libraries in the system.
Correct.
And if you fill it first, so with this system, you'll get paid because you're filling those orders?
Yeah, I mean.
There's a, there's a money coming back to the library because you're filling those orders?
Not, maybe not a direct dollar amount, but the more, the more items that we send to other libraries, the system does track that and that impacts our library services effort ratio. And that calculates, you know, were you a net borrower? Meaning you took more than you gave or were you a net lender? You gave more than you borrowed. And you, you know, you always want to sort of find a, a nice balance. But it, it is significant that we're able to be a, a net lender in that way.
It exempts us from the tax as we did, we.
I thought there was some financial gain out of that.
The county, the county library tax, which was on finance tonight and will be on council tonight as well.
Yeah.
Once you hit a certain percentage or whatever, then you get the benefit. Okay.
And most importantly, your projection was 90,000 last year and it's, it's hit 48,000. Thank you.
Thank you for noticing. Yeah, you know, that, that estimate was from years ago. Obviously, the technology continues to improve in price, the more it becomes the standard. And it has become the industry standard now for libraries.
Can you talk to the IT department about that?
We.
Oh, we need Barb. We need Barb. I'm not going to say anything about Barb. She keeps us in internet. She could cut off my internet and then what would I do?
All right, I'm good.
All right. Any questions before she talks?
No, I think we're done with this one.
All right. Consensus?
Yes, yes.
Next?
All right. So page 26, the redesign of the service, circulation desk. This, this is excellent timing because of the RFID project, which is excellent timing because of the carpeting. So both, the three of those projects, it would be helpful to do in the same year. So once the carpeting gets put in, then we can put the desk on top of it. If RFID is improved, we can design the circulation desk to better accept the technology changes that come with RFID. Beyond that, believe it or not, 21 years ago, the architects of the desk that we have did not envision the amount of technology that libraries would be, be circulating today. You know, we're circulating mobile hotspots, laptops, nooks and Kindle-like, you know, tablets, educational tablets for children. So all of those technologies are, are new and we've had to retrofit and jam stuff in and drill holes and do all that kind of stuff to the desk to, to allow it to accommodate, you know, the changing of the times. It would be really exciting to be able to design this desk around the new RFID technology that we're bringing into it. Beyond that, the desk, that desk is a workhorse. I mean, the, the hundreds, the 100,000-plus items that we circulate every year typically, all the, the books and the media passes through that desk. The 9,000-plus items that we tend to process every year, using 2019 numbers, all those items get processed at that desk. Those 23,000 items that I said we sent out to our other neighboring libraries to help us be a, a net lender, they all cross through that desk. That desk does so many different things. As a result, it's getting a bit worn. Some of the drawers won't shut anymore. Like you try to push it shut and it just keeps coming open. The edges are really worn and splintery. So if you walk by just right, you might get snagged. It's really worn at the base, the, you know, the, the finishing is just wearing off. The redesign of the desk would give us an opportunity to relocate the book drop that's embedded into the desk because it creates a bottleneck. So patrons come in the building, they stop right away, they try to put stuff in the book drop. You know, people are queuing up behind them. So it gives us an opportunity to redesign the desk around the technology, around the workflow of our patrons, to not have splinters.
This is completely custom, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we would build it, yeah, custom. And.
How did the projection, projected cost go from 40 to 60?
Yeah. So first, remember my RFID number, so keep that in your mind and how great that was. Remember how great it was a few minutes ago? But secondly, yeah, so there's, there's three or four reasons why that happened. The first one, I hope my husband never listens to this recording, I was wrong. So, you know, just between us. So I made that estimate based on linear feet of desk surface. And I thought I could use the reference desk, the one we're putting in this year, as a reasonable estimate to project off of. What I didn't take into account, and I should have, is that the circulation desk is higher. So it just has more material and it has more, you know, drawers and shelves. So that was a bad thing to take an estimate off of. The other thing that actually boosted it by $8,000 is we have a processing table that is probably about this size, a little bit wider in this height, that is set right behind the circulation desk. And at the time, I didn't think about including that into the project. And then I thought, well, this, it makes sense to exchange this because it's the same age and getting the same wear as the circulation desk. They'll match aesthetically then. So I added that to the project as well to have them done at the same time.
How large is this bad boy? I mean, how, how big is this?
The circulation desk.
It's that main desk when you walk in the library.
Yeah.
I would say, I would say it's probably from that corner, gosh, all the way around there. It's a, it's a long desk. And, you know, in order for us to be as efficient as possible, but also still being available for patrons, we brought out, most of the work that is done by the staff who service that desk is done right there. So all of the transits, all that stuff that is sent out, all the processing, all the checking in, all the labeling, it's all done right in that space. And so we need that work table there in order to, to help do that.
I built my first house from new construction was $61,000, just as a reference.
That doesn't help me very much.
Just context.
Now you're going to call on Sharon.
It's 35 years ago.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Any questions?
No.
Consensus?
Yeah.
Sure.
And I believe.
I do have a question on this one, though. So since it is custom, is there like a, you know, we build library reference desks company they go to or where do you?
Yeah.
Where's this?
There actually is that exact company, not quite that title. It's called Library Furniture International. And so most likely, I would, whatever company I end up choosing for the reference desk this year, I most likely would choose that vendor, provided that the desk doesn't, you know, melt or, you know, do weird stuff, you know? Because then it would match, you know, again, aesthetically. And Library Furniture International is a company that we have worked with before to get our children's furniture. They do specialize in library reference desk and circulation desk creations. There are other companies out there, which I've used as comparisons when I was pricing out the reference desk. So.
So I guess, yeah, that's, I mean, as far as, I'm guessing there's not a huge competitor to Library Desk International. Maybe there is, but I'm thinking if it's all custom, did you ever get a price from a local, you know, there's cabinet shop or, yeah?
You know, there's actually quite a few competitors in that business. So Nansen, Library Furniture International, Demco. Those are just three that I've been looking at recently. But there's actually a fairly wide market for service desk. So I was able to, you know, get.
Some competitive pricing.
Competitive pricing, yeah.
Thank you. Continuing.
I think, I mean, I got too excited the first time and, and jumped, tried to jump in too early and steal the chief's thunder. But I think that's it for me in 2022, unless anyone wanted to chat about the future.
Any questions on her, any of her extended five-year expenditures? You're done?
Stop by, say hi to the library with me.
Thank you.
Ms. Mueller, you're up.
Thank you. You should all have a handout for, with mailing systems comparison. And basically, this shows a five-year comparison of equipment purchase versus lease, as well as a second quote. You can see the most cost-effective option would be the Pitney Bowes purchase. The current machine is just about 11 years old and starting to have some major significant issues. In addition, the upgraded model would help us significantly process absentee ballots as they're going up every year. So the savings, lease versus purchase would be about $2,600. And you can see the competitor, they are actually almost $8,500 more.
So that's in the five years, it's $2,600?
Yes, it's a five-year. I did look at the three-year, that would be a savings of 1,026. And the four-year would, would be about approximately 1,900 savings to purchase.
What's the life expectancy on this?
Well, this one will be 12 years, so I'm assuming at least 10.
And we, we own the one right now?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not looking, we didn't lease it? Okay.
No. And actually, if we do go with the Pitney Bowes, the operating savings would be approximately $450 per year for the meter rental and the service coverage.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. I, I see service coverage is four grand versus 10 grand. Is there a difference in what they're doing between the two?
No, they're just significantly higher.
Just that?
And, and actually, if you look at the, the back of the first page, you can see the complaints I pulled down.
I was just wondering on that coverage, it seemed kind of strange it would be.
No, I, I called and verified. Just higher.
Any other questions?
Nope.
You're in okay with it?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. The, the other item I have is just a carryover for the electronic polling equipment. I don't expect we will be purchasing that because they, the Wisconsin Election Commission, they're still working out many bugs with the system and I'm just not comfortable. But I'm putting it in there as another placeholder since 2018.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you. All right. Any other communications for the committee a hole? If none, a motion to adjourn the committee a hole would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. It's adjourned at 6:52.